We approach Banyal Luka, first thing you see is a minaret. And I'm going, Allah? First thing you see is minaret. The car stopped by the Firaadiya Masjid and I'm looking, it's a full-fledged masjid. I enter and as you can probably tell, I'm somebody who puts their foot in it sometimes. So I walked in, the Imam said Salaam alaikum, I went, what are you doing here? Why are you here? This is, he goes, what do you mean? This is Banyal Luka. He goes, so what? What's this doing here? And he said to me, okay brother, lahza. He said, in 2002, I was a 22-year-old Imam. And the Bosnian community gathered funds together. Why? Because their grief was so great that they had driven the Bosniaks from Banyal Luka and destroyed the masjid. They believed we cannot face Rasulullah ﷺ if we die and don't restore these masjid. So they gathered money and they sent me as a 22-year-old Imam to Banyal Luka with the sole purpose of rebuilding all 18 masjid. I said, but how did the Serbs let you? He said, they didn't. Initially, they resisted us and they threatened us. So one guy in the community came up with an idea. He said, guys, why don't we go to the UNESCO office and ask them, what do we need to do to get it UNESCO protected? UNESCO said, you need 90% of original materials. So we went back to the Bosnian community, we raised money and we bought all 18 parking lots. And we dug the materials out of the parking lots. And we built the masjid, brick by brick, to the exact architectural dimensions that they were built before. And we got them UNESCO protected and we just finished building our Madrasah and we're about to finish our 18th masjid. He said, because Mladic said he would kick Islam and the masjid out of these areas. We told him, no one turns off the light of Allah ﷻ. This Ummah comes back and strives to rebuild it. He said, we all got together, we even had help from Christians in Ireland, they sent money to rebuild it as well. And yes, there was resistance, but we stayed here and Islam here. He said, did you notice when you entered the city, what's the first thing you saw? I told him, wallahi, the first thing I saw was the minaret. He said, Mladic may have massacred and committed a genocide, but can you say that he won? No, he didn't win, because we are here, Sami, he said. I went, wallahi, I'm a jahil, wallahi, I'm an idiot. I will bring Muslims to Banyal Luka, we will come to this place, wallahi, I'll bring them here. I'll tell everybody, go, I'll bring the Muslim market here. And then as I walked out and I calmed down, I said, but what if I bring Muslims here and something happens to them? And as if Allah heard me, not as if Allah always hears. My wife is walking, she wears hijab and abaya. A woman grabs her in the street like this randomly, goes, excuse me. And I went, pf. And she goes, where are you from? And my wife says, I'm half Algerian, half English. She says, ah, we have a joke about Mother Teresa in Algeria. And she tells some joke about God, Mother Teresa, alcohol and whatever. It was a funny joke, but I can't remember it. And then she says, by the way, I just want to let you know, you're welcome here. Welcome to Banyal Luka. And I went. And then as I walked past the boulevard, there were huge protests against the racist Serbian leader, Dodik. And I said, ya Allah, say no more. Message received. I'm including Banyal Luka on the itineraries. The short answer to your question is, I believe that in my capacity and my wife's capacity, this is how we contribute to the Ummah. I believe I do it by telling people, this is what's happening in the Ummah with Imran Khan being imprisoned for no other reason than they're scared he's going to win the election. And if he wins the election, then Pakistan might actually become a country that serves its people, not a minority elite establishment. They're terrified of the Pakistani people and they put him in prison. I believe that my role is to shout on the microphone, ya Ibadah Allah, bin Salman is bringing Iggy Zayla to twerk in Riyadh. Ya Ibadah Allah, like beware, you know? Don't listen to these Ulama who are telling you, just lower your gaze and go and make Dua. I told ya Ibadah, imagine Umar of Khattab, Allah Anhu, received news that a governor was hosting a rave. What do you think Umar Khattab would react? I always imagine he'd grab the person by the collar and drag him out of the palace and tell him, yo, yee. Of course, I'm not going to put words in his mouth, but... My wife believes that her role, Alhamdulillah, I'm part of it as well, is to reconnect the memories of the Ummah, to tell Muslims, ya Ibadah Allah, don't go for the safe destinations, choose carefully where you're going to go for your destination. For wallahi, you might think you're only going for a vacation or holiday, but everybody is watching you and they are saying, how can I make your life easier? Uzbekistan Tourism, do you know what they said to us? They were like, so my wife gave a talk with Bank of Indonesia. And Uzbekistan Tourism Ambassador was there and she said, you can do tours to Uzbekistan. My job is to help people like you. How did I not know you were doing it? What kind of, so anyway, we ended up advising the Ministry of Tourism. And they said, what do you think we could do to bring more Muslims to Uzbekistan? Because in 2016, a new president came, he lifted the ban on children in mosques, he lifted the ban on hijab, he lifted the ban on... And I was like, you guys have something that many Muslim countries don't have. Do an Islamic Golden Age tour from Tashkent all the way to Hiva. And one guy said to me privately, he went, Sami, I'm a practicing Muslim, but please remember, we're just shaking off the shackles of Soviet Russia. If we're going to go down this road, we have to convince the president that it's a financial reason, not a religious reason, so that there's no backlash from Moscow. I said, how can we do that? He said, if we can get more Muslims to come to Uzbekistan, then the numbers won't lie. We can just say, no, it's not that we're turning away from Russia, it's just that the market is so huge that we want to capitalize on it and re-Islamize Uzbekistan for this reason. I said, so if I tell people to go to Uzbekistan for their holidays, we can, he goes, exactly. Ibadah Allah, don't go to wherever you're going, everyone fly to Tashkent, everyone go, ya Ibadah. Whoever doesn't go, may Allah humiliate him. Whoever doesn't go, whatever, Sami, you can't make Dua on Muslims like that. Okay, but I'll find another way to tell them. Ya Ibadah Allah, go to these countries, you make a difference, your money makes a difference. The short answer to your question is, you know your abilities, you know your environment, you know things I don't know. You know your skills better than I do. I have determined that my skills are in the politics and in the travel industry. I'm going back to London for a week to speak at the Muslim Travel Show, to tell Muslims to fear Allah and to go to the Balkans. And when Muslims tell me they went to Switzerland, I'm like, why put your money in an economy that hates you when you could have put it in Bosnia? Where it's the same views as Switzerland, but it's all halal and it's much cheaper. Like, go, your money makes a difference. Because when I see non-Muslim tourism boards, come and say to me, we're ready to use halal meat, we're ready to do all halal hotels, we're ready to make sure halals don't sell alcohol. If it means that we get a chunk of this $320 billion market, that's 11%, that's the fastest growing market. And then I come to America and somebody tells me, but brother, the Ummah is weak. I tell them, Echi, I know you're weak, but don't project that on the Ummah, because I've seen the Ummah. The Ummah is strong, you're the miserable wretch, but wallahi, go outside and see the Ummah, you'll find it's very strong. You're detached from the Ummah, go reconnect with it, Echi, you're the one in dalal, not the ones you look down on. Barakallah feek.
Barakallah feek. I want to give to the kid, come here. Say your name, okay?
My name, Salaam alaikum.
Wa alaikum Salaam, rahmatullah.
My name is Rafi, I had a question. I know that the Houthis are blocking trade in the Red Sea. I wanted to know, how is that affecting Egypt and what is Egypt doing about it?
Oh, who raised this boy? Inna lillahi wa inna ilaihi ra'jiun. I worry about an Ummah that ignored the Yemenis for nine years when they said to you that the Houthis have plunged our country into war for the seventh time. Because they believe that if all Yemenis come to a consensus about a ruler, it is still haram, because in Islamic law, only the Houthis family is allowed to rule Yemen, because they are Ahl al-Bait. I worry about an Ummah where the Iraqis called out for 15 years to say, we're being massacred by pro-Iran militias who are unfurling banners that say, we're taking revenge for Hussein, as if somehow they're the ones who killed Hussein. Even though, you know, when you read the history, I'm just saying, I'm just saying, for those interested in doing history. If you read Ali ibn Abi Talib's Nahjul Balaghah, radhiallahu anhu. Ali ibn Abi Talib says something about those who claim to love him that condemns them. He says to them, wallahi, I wish I had never met you. He said, I tell you, march with me in the day, in the day, you march with me in the summer, you tell me it's too hot. I tell you, march with me in the winter, you tell me it's too cold. Wallahi, if Muawiya were to give me one of his men for 10 of you, I would gladly trade. The reason his son, Al Hassan, radhiallahu anhu, abdicated to Muawiya is because when Al Hassan marched out with his army to fight Muawiya, he heard these people who claimed to love him, he heard them behind him, starting to curse Sahabah and bickering between themselves. And the story goes that he looked at his army and said, you know what, I can never defeat Muawiya with an army like these people. So he went to Muawiya and made a deal in which he would abdicate and give Muawiya the Khilafah and Muawiya would give it to him afterwards. But Al Hassan died before Muawiya. And Hussain insisted that the agreement was not between two men, it was between two clans. And Muawiya said, it wasn't between two clans, it was between two men. I made a deal with Al Hassan, not with the family of Al Hassan. And that's when the differences emerged. When you're asking about the Houthis, there's an Arabic saying, which is, inna fi qalbi inna. That it's when you see something that while you appreciate on the surface, it's good, but in your heart is deep, deep unease. Because I appreciate that the Iranian proxies have made a difference for Palestine. I appreciate that they've put pressure on Israel. I appreciate that when the Palestinians were abandoned, they at least did something. I understand and I respect what the Houthis say, that if you claim we're doing this for show, then why don't you put on a show as well? I appreciate when a BBC presenter in Arabic speaks with the passion as if she's a Zionist, where she says, why are you getting involved in Palestine, you're so far from Palestine? And Muhammad Ali al-Houthi turns around and says, and what's Biden doing? What, he lives in the flat next to Netanyahu? Macron lives in the same apartment building, what are they doing, Israel, if you're telling us that we're far away? I appreciate that, yes, at least they're doing something. I also appreciate that they're doing it because they genuinely love Palestine. I've met Houthis, I have very good friends who are Houthis, not something you should say publicly, but in any case. I know a lot of their spokespeople, I interview them for an Arabic TV channel. I know that they are sincere in the love for Palestine. But that blind sincerity in ideological ties has seen them massacre more Sunnis than Israel has massacred Palestinians. When Qassem Soleimani, the Iranian general, who was killed by Trump in 2019, when they were in Syria, he used to add a clause to the ceasefire agreements. Whereby he would agree to a ceasefire in certain areas, but on the condition that Sunnis would be loaded onto buses and sent to the north and Shia from the north be brought to the south, because he wanted to create a Shia bridge from Tehran all the way to Lebanon. I have been following Houthis since 2000 and whatever. I don't know what to make of a people who kill their own, but stand up for Palestine. And I don't know what to make of it. I remember there was a meme, a funny meme, when ISIS were in Iraq. Not that ISIS were funny, but I'm saying this, a funny meme. It was, they showed a group of ISIS fighters and they said, we are in Iraq, but our eyes are on Al-Aqsa. And they brought the Egyptian comedian, Ad Al Imam, a picture of him, like to say what the Iraqis were thinking. They were like, guys, you've caused us so much headache, why don't you go to Al-Aqsa and leave your eyes on Iraq? You're not like, just, just, yeah, just go, you know. And part of me feels, part of me, and I know this sounds bad to say, part of me feels that it might be better if the Houthis and stop killing Yemenis and the Iraqi militias stop killing the Iraqis. I would prefer that they do nothing for Palestine and they stop killing the Sunnis, so that we in the Sunni world can focus on helping Palestine. Because I promise you, and this is making, this is going to make me very sick to say, like my stomach hurts saying it. When the Saudis say that Iran is a greater threat to Saudi than Israel, politically, they are absolutely correct. Name me one issue where Israel is a direct threat to Saudi Arabia. You can't name anyone. Now look at Iranian militias surrounding Saudi Arabia from the north to the east to the south. Why did you have to ask me this question? Having said that, the Houthis are doing more than what these other nations are doing, so... Inna fi qalbi inna, but I don't know what to do about it. I don't know, wallahi.
Okay, guys, we have three minutes. So, you have a question, come brother, it's before you.
Salaam alaikum. So my question was along the same lines, I'm going to ask it a little differently. So you talk about the opinion change and the impact in the world because of that. But don't you think, and I do not relate to that group, whatever group it is, but if a small group can stand against a large army, like the superpower, don't you think if we can show it to the world, it's going to give us the courage, especially us Muslims? We have a lot of big countries with armies that we can also stand against those powers? That was my question. The second question is personally, you can choose not to answer. Did Saudi Arabia already ban you or not?
I think that your question links very similar back to the question that you asked earlier, which is that now there's a shift in public opinion, what can we do? That will set us on a route, you know, to liberate Palestine or the like. The reality is that I think that there is a maxim in football, soccer. So sometimes you have 90 minutes in the game, right? And there are certain sections of the game where you just move the ball to see what the other side is going to do. Does their fullback come forward too much, do the midfielders press, are they sitting deep, are they whatever? The reason why I say that is sometimes, even if you can't see the road in front of you, keep moving so that you open up opportunities that you didn't know were there before. And the reason why I say that is that the Ummah is an Ummah that should always be moving, even if it can't see the outcome. And the proof is that Allah in the Quran says, that Rasul and the Sahabah, zulzilu, hatta yuquul Rasul waladina amanu ma'uh, mata nassruu Allah. That they were shaken until the Prophet and the Sahabah would say, when is the victory of Allah coming? Which means, according to their analysis of the day, they couldn't see where victory would come from. That didn't stop them from moving. The reason why I gave you the example of things that me and my wife do is to say to you that while I don't have the powers that I wish I had, I believe I'm trying to deploy the powers that I do have, in the hope that I will either get greater power or I will inspire somebody with greater power, or I will create for myself a platform or opportunity through which to deploy greater power. It's not necessarily these are the end games, but this is the only way I know how to move the ball, how to move, in the hope that it will eventually create an opportunity. And the best example I can give is, when Gaza broke out, for three days I sat depressed in my house. My wife said to me, Sami, Sarah, how you're becoming useless? You're not helping with the dishes, you're not helping with the Hoover, either get up and go record a video or come and help me. And I said, I'll go record a video. So anyway, when I recorded the video, Thinking Muslim Podcast called me for an interview. I did Thinking Muslim Podcast. When I did that, Yaqeen called me for the interview. When I did Yaqeen, I got invited to America. When I did my first tour, I got invited on a second tour, then a third tour. And then suddenly people are talking about how can we punish Biden and abandon Biden? Allah took me from here to here. I did one movement, Allah sent me 10 levels up. Allah brought the efforts of different individuals together. If someone told you four months ago, there's a random guy in London called Sami, he's going to sit in front of you in Irving Masjid. You just said, what's the Hikmah behind it, like what's the use of it? But Allah meant that I moved in London, you moved here and we ended up together. Allah ties those efforts together. But there's nothing to tie if the efforts aren't already there, which is why we keep moving. The Houthis move in their own way. They created, you know, opportunities in the Red Sea and they put pressure on the Egypt and they put pressure on Biden or the like, or the like. I'm moving in one way and I ended up here, you're moving another way, you ended up here. I'm here in America, the UK guys are telling me, why are you always in America and not in the UK? I told them, because these guys can actually punish Biden while you guys are still bickering between yourselves. I'd rather be where I feel useful than to come there and listen to the bickering that's taking place in London. Truthfully, Alhamdulillah, that's why the answer to your question when it comes to, you know, is it worth a small army to... Don't think about it in those terms. Think about that, now that Gaza has taught you that maybe you do actually, actually have more power than you think you have, let's talk about how we can deploy that power. Sami's complaining that he can't buy Timbaland because they support the Zionists. We need a shoe company that makes good quality shoes. Sami is wearing these turtle tops because all his shirts are Marks and Spencer, because he could not find the Muslim equivalent. Somebody please make shirts so I can buy the shirts. Then in 10 years' time, when you become a mega business and we need funding for institutions, I no longer have to ask only the doctors, lawyers and engineers. I can ask the businessmen across a whole range of industry, just like the Zionists, when they're able to pool money from all industries, we're no longer pooling from a little, you know, well, we're pooling from a sea of money that's available to us because we built power in the Ummah, because we plugged those holes. For me, this is jihad fi Sabiilillah. When I say, what's your strategy for November to punish genocide Joe? Again, the views expressed by the speaker are the speaker's own, have nothing to do with the organization that invited me and they didn't ask me what I was going to say. What's our strategy for November? Have we gathered the data of the areas where we know we can punish, you know, the candidates? Do we know the areas where we can vote? Do we know the margin of difference? Do we know how many votes we need? Do we know how many Muslims are registered? Do we know that there's an area in Texas where the deciding vote between the candidates was 1,500 votes? But there were 4,000 Muslims that didn't vote, which meant those Muslims could have decided who won and who lost. And the candidate who won was the one who supported the genocide, while the candidate who lost is the one calling for a ceasefire. And because we were sitting, because we were sitting at home sleeping, saying, we don't want to use that power, we didn't recognize it. And then we ask ourselves later, why don't our representatives care about us? You don't even move, Echi, you don't even use the power, you don't even put the effort in. Have we calculated the data where we can make a difference? Because it's true, I tell people to punish genocide Joe, but do you know that if you're really organizing, you gather the data, you could punish genocide Joe and make sure Trump doesn't win the House? You could get the perfect scenario. Because there's data that, but have you got that data? The Zionists have the data already. For those of you in areas where you can't make a difference, have you decided to gather money to send some people to help those in Michigan to make a difference? Because Mashallah, you guys have resources, I've seen your houses Mashallah. You know, when I went back to London after seeing the houses in Texas, Sumaya said to me, welcome home. I told her, Sumaya, I feel claustrophobic. When, by the time we get to like April, what's our plan? You know, I always say, let's get the data for March, let's get the resources ready by June, let's get the training for the messaging and the hashtags by August. You know, I'll tell you a story, somebody said to me, Sami, I don't have followers on TikTok or social media or the like, I don't, I can't make a difference. Let me tell you a story about an interesting individual. During the Turkish elections, I received a message from this particular individual. They said, Sami, I want to do something because everybody is against Erdogan, I want to do my part, I want to do a video. Can I send you a script and can you check the script and can you tell me if it's okay or not? Okay. They sent the script. Now I don't know, I didn't feel that my, I knew this person quite well, but I didn't feel like our relationship was one in which I could tell this person my honest opinion. So I said, I was like, you know what, let me just give them a pat on the back and say, well done for the effort. It looks good, Bismillah. And they replied and they said, this feels like one of those pat on the back, twakka Allah, Bismillah. Can you tell me what you honestly think about the script? I was like, Alhamdulillah, it's good. They were like, inna fi qalbi inna. There is something in this good that I don't like. Please, I beg you, give me your honest opinion. I said, the script is rubbish. You've said in five lines what you could have said in one. Your main point is buried in the middle of four different points. You use no rhetorical devices, like rule of three, the Ummah is not weak, the Ummah is not bleak, the Ummah is not... This is called pounding the message into the people. You need to use these rhetorical devices. You have 10 seconds to win 30 seconds. You have 30 seconds to win a minute, you have a minute to win two minutes, because people scroll very fast. Anyway, we worked on the script, three days later, they published it on their social media platforms. They don't have a large following. They got 350,000 views within two days across all social media platforms. The communications department of their country hired them immediately after that video. The point that I'm saying is, between June and July and August, do we have like these training programs ready? Where people are ready to, you know, how to convey the message and deliver the message? When September comes, are we ready for the information blitz, in case the Ummah forgets that a genocide happens? Are we ready for that information blitz? The way the Zionists will do, are we ready, you know, do we have the hashtags ready? Have we thought about these things? In November, are we ready to, you know, what happens after Biden loses? When those four years of difficulty come, the four years of Ijaf, you know, like Yusuf alayhi salam, the four years of tough... You know, once we win that victory and we top a sitting US president, do we know what we're doing afterwards? How we're going to entrench those institutions? You know, the Ummah loves to give charity, even though the Prophet SAW said, the hand that gets the slisk is better. The reason that we make it like this is because we don't trust our Ummah with our investment. The Zionists invest 10 times in a failure because they know on the 11th time, he creates Google. The Zionists invest 14 times in a failure because on the 15th time, they'll create Meta. We invest one time and we say, we tell the whole community, guys, don't invest in this guy, he's a loser. Don't invest in him, he wasted 100,000 of my investment. He's like, dude, it was the first attempt, I don't care, it was 100,000. These people remind me, when Khalid ibn Walid was sent by the Prophet SAW to an area, he transgressed against a tribe. And the Prophet SAW raised his hands in the air and he said, Allahumma inni abra'u ilaihim mima fa'la Khalid. Allah, I'm innocent of what Khalid has done. You know, when I read that Hadith, what came to mind? I said, you know, the Prophet SAW sent Khalid ibn Walid back into the battlefield, you know? The Ummah of today would have said, Khalid, you're cancelled. Do you know what the Prophet SAW said about you? You'll never lead an army again, I don't care how talented you are, you're cancelled. That's the difference between the Ummah of the Prophet SAW and the Ummah of today. Allah says in the Quran, that the Sahabah, ashedda'u ala al-kufari ruhamaaubainahum. They are tough on the oppressors and repressors, but merciful between themselves. Sometimes I feel we're the opposite. We make no excuses for our scholars, but we give a thousand excuses for the red pill movement. That's why I always argue, and I finish on this point, I promise. There's something that fascinates me about the Battle of Badr in the Seerah, which is when the Prophet SAW was marching forward. Before he gets to the battlefield, he does something, he turns around to his army and he says, ashiru alaiya, advise me. Mahajirin are quiet, they're confused, he's like, he's not talking to us. The Ansar, they say, Sa'ad al-Muad, radhiallahu anhu, says, ya Rasulullah, as if you're talking to us, as if you're seeking reassurance from us. And Rasulullah ﷺ says, and if I am, and Sa'ad al-Muad says, ya Rasulullah, we've given you our oath that we're standing with you whether you win or lose, whether you win or lose. We've given you our oath and we're ready to go for it for the sake of Allah ﷻ. And Prophet SAW continues, if even the Prophet SAW needed the reassurance from the Ansar, why do you look down on those who, when they have an initiative, they call on you and you say, why are you asking me? You're the one with the genius idea, go and show, like show us first where the victory comes from. Idhab anta warabbuka faqatila innahu naqaidu. We say to them what Beni Israyyid said to Moosa, go you and your lord and fight, we'll be here waiting until you show us a victory. We don't support those who lose, we want to support the winners. Without realizing that we read the Seerah, we read about the Muslims being persecuted in Mecca and then winning in Badr, losing in Uhud, existential crisis in Khandak and signing the Treaty of Hudaybiya. We read the Seerah and we go, Mashallah, look at the perseverance. And then when something similar to the Seerah happens in our own community, we say, ah! So you say Mashallah here, but you implement the opposite in your life. You say Mashallah on the Hadith, but you do the opposite in your life. And then you ask why the Ummah is unable to achieve things, even though it has the power to achieve it. Moving forward, you're asking, you know, the question, which I've forgotten. Moving forward, ya Ibadah Allah, I don't know if we will successfully punish genocide Joe, but I know there's a chance that we might be able to do so. I don't promise you that you will succeed in what you're about to do, but I can promise you one thing. That Allah ﷻ is always in control in every single second that passes on this earth. And I promise you that Allah holds the fate of the world in His hands. And I promise you, Allah will never humiliate this Ummah so long as it strives for what is right. And I promise you that if today we're about to make a mistake, because we're intending it in the way of Allah ﷻ, Allah will make sure He turns that road to the mistake, to the road to that which is correct. All Allah asks of us is to move and He will handle the rest. All I'm asking you to do is try any idea that you might have. For wallahi, it may be the idea that you think won't work, that turns out to be the idea that doesn't work, but creates the opportunity and path that opens the door to a possibility we didn't consider, that turns out to be the door that leads to the success. For wallahi, up until Hudaybiya, even after Hudaybiya, the Prophet SAW did not know he would enter Mecca the following year. He had just signed the treaty for 10 years, but Allah had written that the victory was close. They couldn't see it, but it was close. And Allah rewarded them because even though they couldn't see the outcome, they kept moving. Ibadah Allah, we may fail miserably in November, but let me put it to you this way. It's better to live four years of hardship, knowing you did everything you could, than to live four years of hardship in humiliation that you could have done something but chose not to. I don't promise you the success, this is where I finish. I don't promise you the success, I don't promise you you will succeed, but I promise you there's an opportunity. I promise you the data suggests you can do something groundbreaking, that you can do for the first time, you can punish a candidate in the way Zionists punish candidates. I promise you that I see an opportunity for us to transform this Muslim community from a community that has no value to a community that has value. Right now, when the congresspeople come to visit you, in their car, they tell their secretary, what can I do to amaze? He doesn't do research, he tells the person in the car on the way to the Irving Masjid here, and he says, what can I say to wow the Muslims? And their secretary says, they have a saying, assalamah, assa, assamamekum. So when the congressperson comes and he stands in front of you, he says, assamamekum everybody. And everybody goes, ah Mashallah! You know, it's actually, assalamu alaikum, assalam, it's okay. And then he might say, mubarak Eid, and you'll be like, oh Mashallah! You know, it's Eid mubarak, but yeah, thank you very much. If the Muslims punish a sitting US president, when I, Inshaallah, am invited, bi Athnaa, to come and pray, tarawih with you next year on Ramadan, I would not be surprised if we find the congressperson praying with us in the back. I would not be surprised if a congressperson visits you the next year, because you punish a sitting US president and he stands where I'm standing and he says, guys, we gotta do this together. Because as the Prophet Muhammad said, innam ala malu bin yari. I would not be surprised if you... A potential candidate here, but I would not be surprised if a congressperson comes here and you know, maybe, you know, if you're going through some struggles and he says, guys, as your Prophet Muhammad said, innam ala striyusra. Why? Because he knows that you have value. But if genocide Joe wins the second term when you could have punished him? I promise you, you'll go knock on the door and they'll be like, excuse me, there's somebody from the Muslim community, he's here to see you. Yeah, tell him, I'm not interested, but they're a community, listen, they're a community. Biden killed 20,000 of their brethren on the side of the, Biden committed genocide and they still voted for him. Biden committed a genocide, but they were so scared of four years of discomfort in their lovely big four-bedroom houses. Allahumma lahasad, may Allah increase you and give me one as well. Allahumma lahasad, may Allah increase you and give me one as well. The prices for your house is here, by the way. Like, someone showed me three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, can get you like a three-bedroom, four-bedroom, you know, like a big house. You know, a studio flat in the United Kingdom, in Wembley where I live, a studio flat, starting price is five hundred thousand dollars. Studio. Just so you understand, like, why I'm so shocked about it. But may Allah increase you and increase me, Insha'allah, with you guys, Insha'allah.
Okay. So, two things. One is announcement that we are going to have Qiyam, Insha'allah. Brother Hamza is, you are here. So, we'll give you ten minutes to make wudhu and relax, and come back for the Qiyam. And before that, we'll give our last question to our Sheikh. Dr. Siraj, Insha'allah, Bismillah. Last question, okay?
And short answer, Insha'allah.
Thank you, Radin. Thank you, brother Sami. I really feel honored to be in this congregation and listen to you. You have shared your knowledge with us, and you have educated us. We have a serious issue that is going on in Palestine right now. Atrocities, genocide, whatever you want to call that. My question to you is, how is the international community dealing with this situation? And number two, has the International Court of Law has any responsibility for this kind of atrocities going on? I would like to hear from you on this particular issue. This is a common question, then the youngers will ask the olders. And finally, they will ask, what is the Hikmah behind what is going on in Palestine? Thank you very much.
That last part of the question, oof. The first part about the international community. Today, David Cameron said, we need an immediate ceasefire. The Finnish Foreign Minister from Finland said, we need an immediate ceasefire, self-defense is over. We see now that the Israelis have offered Humus a two-month truce, which I think, if the war is gonna end, it will be phased out. It won't be a ceasefire, it will be phased out gradually. It'll be an extended, it'll be a first pause, then extended pause, then eventually a de facto ceasefire. Because the Americans will not allow a ceasefire that recognizes Humus. So as a result, they will make sure that they will keep a status where there is no war, but Hamas is not recognized. So that's in terms of international community, they're moving towards the idea of, we need the Israelis now to stop and cease. And I think there's heavy pressure now on the Israelis now. The second point about the International Court of Law, we see tomorrow what the ruling will be, and we have to see what the reaction of the international community will be. Netanyahu is worried, he met with his legal team today. The Americans are worried, they're debating, because it seems that there will be a meeting to discuss the Geneva Convention on Genocide that Biden has been delaying. They're apparently due to meet, I think, in the next couple of weeks. Biden has been delaying, but they're insisting on doing so. Eli Cohen, the Israeli Foreign Minister, went to European Union four days ago to meet with the twenty-seven member states. He presented the plan for an artificial island, to put the Palestinians on the artificial island. He was stunned that the twenty-seven member states were so horrified that the EU is meeting to impose consequences on Israel for what it's doing to the Palestinians, and the Israelis are confused that we presented this great idea, why are you guys so upset about it? The third point in terms of the Hikmah behind what's happening in Palestine, and I know a lot of young people are asking that. There are two books that I read before Gaza happened, that if I had not read them in the two weeks before Gaza, I would not be saying the things that I'm saying today. The first is a book about the Algerian War of Independence. So I was sitting with an Algerian guy, and we were talking about why Macron never wants to apologize for what they did in France. So I said, you know what, enough complaining. I'm gonna buy a book by somebody who believes the French should have stayed in Algeria. I'm gonna buy a book by someone who loves colonization and read what their take is on the Algerian liberation movement. My wife said, why are you giving him royalties? I said, let him have the royalties. I just want to know why they won't apologize. He identifies two turning points in the Algerian liberation movement. The first, he says, was the nineteen twenties when Sheikh Abdul Hamid bin Bedis set up the Council of Islamic Scholars. He said, the graduates of those schools formed the rank and file of the FLN that would emerge later. A generation that was well-versed in Quran, well-versed in Islamic tradition, and that successfully reversed the damage that France had done in terms of trying to de-Islamize Algeria and ruin the identity. The second turning point is the one relevant to your question. He said, the second turning point that broke France, that meant that they were going to be kicked out, was actually the massacre of nineteen forty-five, when the French, who were celebrating liberation from Nazi Germany in Europe, massacred thirty thousand Algerians from Stif, Khartoum, and Gelma. I'm baffled, I was baffled that he identifies a massacre of the Muslims as the turning point for their liberation. He argues that the French were convinced, and so were the people around, that that massacre meant that Algerians would never resist again. It was such a heavy, like rivers of blood. He said, that woke the Algerians up and the Ummah up, that woke them up from a slumber, that meant that the next seventeen years, there was such momentum that the French were kicked out seventeen years later, in nineteen sixty-two, even though the Algerians were never at any point militarily superior to the French. He argues in his book that if the massacre of nineteen forty-five had not happened, the French could possibly have survived much longer in Algeria. So when the young people tell me that, what's the Hikmah behind this massacre? It's true, I'm uncomfortable with the framing of it as Hikmah in death. Even though I understand that Allah ﷻ has said, don't consider those who've been killed for the sake of Allah as dead. They are alive with Allah, already happy. No punishment of the grave, no limbo, no waiting for the book, whether it's in the right or the left, no waiting or crossing the Siraat, no watching the angels debate, you know, he did bad deeds, he did good deeds. None of that, straight to Jannah with Allah ﷻ. No pain, no bums, no nothing. Allah says, I've sorted them out. You will suffer the punishment of the grave if you do that. They will never have to taste it. Allah said, I've spared them that. But also, I feel like those who ask the question don't study their history. And that's why I point to this idea of the nineteen forty-five massacre. And I think that when you look at Gaza and the great awakening that is happening, and the shift in public opinion, because one of the things that he describes in this book is that during that decade after the massacre, the global of public opinion was also shifting. America was becoming a superpower and wanted to see the British fail. They wanted to see the French fail. They want to see the Italians fail. The global powers were no longer helping each other. The same way we're seeing China, Russia, and all Europe, and the US, all falling out with each other. It resembles, very similar to the decade of when Algeria was liberated. And that's why, when I read that book and I saw what happened in Gaza, I saw the parallels immediately. So when the Ummah was saying this is a disaster, I was going, wait, wait, I've seen this before. I've seen this before, and I know in history, it ends with victory for us. The second book that I read was Surat Houd in the Quran. I was leading Salat, and I wanted to recite Surat Houd. And for some reason, even though I know it, I was making mistakes. I read two ayah, mistake on the third. I read the fourth ayah, mistake on the fifth. Eventually, I gave up, Ajddad Ruku, Allahu Akbar. So I went back to open Surat Houd to memorize it, and I found in Surat Houd, it's a story of prophets who by your standards, don't actually achieve any success. They call on their people, their people don't believe, Allah destroys them. Houd goes, Salah goes, Shuaib goes, Nuh goes, Luth goes. Luth even says, if only I had a powerful ally to... It's a statement you're like, if only I had power, I don't have power to resist you. Nuh (ﷺ) in Surat Nuh says, Allah, I've called on my people day and night, and every time I call them, they run away. And when I call on them, so you might forgive them, they put their fingers in their ears and they cover their faces. That ayah remind, when people said to me that we keep talking about Palestine, it's not making a difference, I remembered Surat Nuh and his lamentation. When people told me, oh, I'm despairing, I don't have power to do anything, I remembered Luth (ﷺ) in Surat Houd. And I said, Subhanallah, people are saying the exact things that were said just before the victory comes. That's what changed my perspective, why people said, why is Sami optimistic in the midst of what's happening? It's because, Ya Ibadah Allah, what I'm seeing before me is an exact replica of what I read in the Quran and in this book on Algeria. This was exactly the situation just before the victory came. In my heart, I truly believe we are closer, and I truly believe that now the Ummah, this is great awakening happening, all I have to do, in my opinion, I just have to go to the Muslims and beg them and plead with them to see the Ummah the way I do. Beg them and plead with them to see the power that they have, that Blinken fears in them. To appreciate the power that Netanyahu fears in them. To appreciate the power that they have, that Israel spent billions to make sure you don't use it. And that's why for me, it's always baffling, and I finish on this point here. What bewilders me about my Ummah is my Ummah is very powerful, and I've seen the power of my Ummah. What bewilders me is how a powerful Ummah believes itself to be weak. But the enemies of the Ummah believe it to be so strong that to this day, they're so desperate to try to repress it. It's like they're coming in and saying, beware this strong Ummah. The Ummah goes, whoa, bro, what do you mean, strong? Like, what are you talking about? Where's this power you guys see in us? Like, where's... We don't let them manifest it. And that's why I think, and I always make this, it's a semi-joke, but I'm actually being serious. Sometimes I believe Blinken believes in the power of Allah more than most Muslims do. Netanyahu believes in the power of Allah more than most Muslims do. Because Netanyahu and Blinken showed that if you leave Muslims alone and give them freedom, they will achieve extraordinary things, because they have Allah. Who saw that Israeli analyst on that TV, who says the Muslims have a concept called Sabr? And we don't have it in Hebrew, he said. Did you see it? He goes, we don't have it in Hebrew. He said, the Muslims believe that because they have Allah, it doesn't matter how many of them fall along the road. They believe victory is coming because they have Allah. They don't see, they don't see Allah as a substitute, the way we do. They believe Allah is in the field. They believe because he's in the field, they're destined to win, no matter what happens. He said, this Ummah is, he's almost talking like a Muslim. He goes, you need to understand what these Muslims are like. When I saw that interview, that's when I said, Subhanallah, the non-Muslim appreciates Allah's power more than the Muslim does. He believes because Allah is in the playing field, Israel is destined to be defeated, while the Muslim is looking and saying, when is the victory of Allah coming? Why does Netanyahu and Blinken see Allah's hand, but you fail to see Allah's hand? I see it, I want you to see it, I want you to appreciate it. And may Allah give victory to our soul and guide us all, Insha'allah.
Allah bless your parents. And may Allah make your resistance and suffer on us. Zakallah, fair, may Allah bless you. We are going to give you five minutes to make wudhu, and we come back, Insha'allah, we'll make Tawakkah and Dua, Insha'allah, for our brothers and sisters in Palestine.
Barakallah, thank you very much for tolerating the long speech. Allahu Akbar.
Allahu Akbar. Allahu Akbar. Amin, Barakallah.